It is Tuesday, April 25th, and we are the Duluth Public Schools. And this is our regular monthly Tuesday meeting. We welcome all of our community here to our school board meeting. It is a school board meeting to do the business of the school board that happens to be in public. But we are very, we're very committed to having our meetings in public, and we're very committed to inviting our public in and being a part of all of the different activities and methods that the school board uses along with the administration to further the impact on our students here at ISD 709. So, welcome. It's Tuesday, April 25th. In a couple of months, we will no longer be meeting at East, and we will be having our school board meetings at our new district service building office that's just finishing some touches. And we hope to be moving over in mid-July to August. I've loved being at our school buildings. We've been at Denfeld all last season, and we've been at East for our regular school board meetings all of this year. And it's been delightful to be in the community. But I can tell you that our new district service school board meeting really does have the best interest of our business and what we need. The smart boards, the easier access, the availability of hearing better than what we've had maybe. But again, we're excited to be here, but we're also excited about the move. So here we are at our regular school board meeting. And I'm going to turn to Clerk Sedowski, and she will take role call.
Member Derek Peter.
Present.
Member Kirby.
Here.
Member Lachlan Camp.
Here.
Member Little Paul.
Here.
Member Ozil is excused. I am here. Member Sandholm.
Present.
Superintendent Magus.
Here.
Assistant Superintendent Bonds.
Present.
Deputy Clerk Zunich.
Ex-president.
Present. HR Director Severance.
Here.
And then, let's see, our student reps that are here. Denfeld Representative Lauren Mulder, here. Perfect. And then, East Representative Elsa Priest.
Here.
And it looks like our ALC reps weren't able to make it, so.
Thank you. And so our next item on the agenda is agenda item number three. It's the Pledge of Allegiance. Stand if you're able as we do our pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And school board members, we've had our agenda for a few days anyway. And so I'm looking at item number four, and I'm looking for an approval to approve our agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Member Lachlan Camp and a second by Member Kirby. And then, I'm going to open it up for discussion because we have some changes. So I always ask for a motion first and a second, and then open it up for discussion. So, board members, I am looking for a motion to remove from our current school board meeting item 1B3A in the consent agenda. So if you look to your consent agenda, I'm asking for you to pull off of the consent. That, I know, I know I'm looking for my consent agenda here. So, I am looking for a motion for removing, it is the Head Start, it is the Head Start agenda on consent agenda. So, Member Sedowski makes the motion. Is there a second? Thank you, Member Sandholm for that second. And so I'm looking to approve that removal. And I'm asking that because we're actually going to put it back on to, it's on the consent agenda, and we're just striking it, and we're putting it on to our regular school. So I'll ask for that motion next. But first, just a vote for removal of the Head Start information off of our consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries to remove that from our consent agenda. And then, next, board members, I'm looking for a motion to amend our regular school board meeting. And this would be to add 13Bc. So if you see that it's under Special Resolutions and Action Items, it would be Bc. And I'm asking for you to add a presentation and approval of Head Start items by Sherri Williams.
So moved.
Moved by Member Lachlan Camp and second is by Member Sandholm. All those in favor of adding the Bc, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. And then, board members, I'm asking then for approval of the amended agenda. We've got a motion already and a second. So all those in favor of the agenda as it now is amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Thank you. That means that we're moving on to number five. And number five is our school and community recognition. And that's where I turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Bonds.
Thank you, Tre La Fuay, and good evening, everyone. Today, I am really excited to introduce a team who is being recognized today. So I would ask that the Coach Gunderson, could you please come up, sir? As well as the Denfeld Nation Automation Team, if you could also join the table. Why the table? If you relax, sit or just turn to the board.
Turn to the board. I got you, got you.
Welcome. So, board, these students have worked hard all year long, building, tweaking, coding, testing, and fixing their robots. And that hard work paid off. On March 26th, during the North Star Regional, the Denfeld Robotics Team won seven matches in a row and was picked to be the sixth alliance. The team made it to the semifinals, but they were unfortunately knocked out by the third alliance. At the award ceremony later that day, the team won the Engineering Inspiration Award, which celebrates outstanding success in advancing respect and appreciation for engineering within the team's school or community. Receiving the award qualified the team for the World Championship, which was held in Houston last week. We are very proud of them for their hard work, and we can't wait to see what they do next. Coach, would you like to introduce the team and tell us a little bit about the competition?
Absolutely. Yeah, our team has 28 students. We have seven of them here today to be recognized. We have Matthew Yukic, Sarah Schaper, Ezra Kestie, Connor Goodrim, Alex Jung, Devin Anderson, and Ben Martin. Ben Martin is one of our team captains. But these guys all did an amazing job this year. They built a wonderful robot that really held its own against some of the best robots in the entire world. And it was a great experience for our team. So proud of them for all the work that they do year in and year out to run a very successful robotics team from our school. So, we're excited to be here. Thank you for recognizing us. And we love to represent Denfeld and Duluth. And to do it on such a big stage was really an amazing experience for all of them.
Thank you, Coach. Also, students, this is your chance. You want to tell us about your experience? You want to tell us about the World Championship in Houston?
Well, I'd say it was definitely very overwhelming, seeing all the people, you know, and just being in like an environment where it just feels like everyone was so excited about the same thing. You know, everyone could, you know, share your experiences and just, you know, being a very exciting experience.
Yeah, I second that. And I remember in our division alone, there was teams there from Canada, Israel, and I believe also the Netherlands as well. And it was very interesting seeing what teams from not just the US, but other countries also came up with and hearing about their role on, so. It was also very warm.
Yep, there was absolutely no snow down there.
Well, we are really truly proud of you, so congratulations. And I'm sure the board and superintendent would like to also share some sentiments.
Number Sand.
Can you tell us about your robot? I think probably everybody wants to hear something about your robot.
Well, so one thing we did this year was work drag, which is something a lot of teams did. It allows your robot to move in any direction, which really allows you to pick up game pieces fast, move around other robots. One thing that's special about our robot is an anti-push system our coders worked on, which means when a robot pushes our robot, enough power goes into our motors where our robot will not move, which allows us to play some really good defense, and we will recognize for that. That's, because at our first, the LSR, for those who have the deck, we got an award, the autonomous award. And one of the main reasons we won that award was because of our anti-push system.
Other questions?
Sure, I had a chance to talk to the students before, but just, you know, again, huge congratulations. I think I shared with you, I, my kids were involved with something different, but we went to global competitions, and the meeting of kids from all over really was cool. And so I was glad you highlighted that, and just so proud of you and for bringing the spirit of Duluth and Denfeld, but the spirit of Duluth we get to Texas. So, thank you so much for representing us well.
And I've shared before with your media leader, the student that does your press releases, and, you know, I think all board members get your weekly updates. And that's been wonderful to read and to keep updated as to where you are, whether it was last November or just the past weeks. And also, I think you've had a great presence on our Facebook social media pages as well, on our school districts and on Denfeld's. And that just brings more awareness, because, and that's another reason why it's so important for school board and for our community recognition, that we take the time to bring teams that have done something well in our district to bring you to our board meetings, to really be able to see the faces of our students, and we really appreciate that. So congratulations, and again, thanks for the PR update. I think that the first program, the robotics program, when it first, how long has it been a part of our district now, Andy, maybe?
For the district, I'm not sure. East had the first team, and I believe it was sometime around 2008.
Yeah.
Denfeld's had a team since 2012.
Yeah, and it's just been such a great activity, all the way from how you use your fundraising to how you do your social media and your press and your communications, and then your builders of all of that, so.
Yeah, and it's just, yeah, going out in the community. I know that you've been at a lot of community events at the depot and other places. So, thank you for spending some Saturdays with the community and with younger kids, being mentors for them, so.
Just a great power. So, thank you.
I just wanted to share quick, I have a little future hunter, I think I talked with you, and I share my, the press releases with them. And he is just like, I'd love, he's just so excited to be part of your team someday. And so, thank you for inspiring a whole bunch of kids that want to be there. And anytime I see a group of kids in our district excelling at math and science, like you all clearly are, just warms my heart. So, thank you so much. And I am so indeed proud of you, as I know everybody else, so, great job.
So I just wanted to, again, reiterate on behalf of the district, the superintendent, it's exciting to see people go to regional, it's exciting to see people go to state or national. But a world championship, that's very, very, something that we're very, very proud of. Can't wait to see what's in your future, how you might apply this to jobs or career or your education from here moving forward. But I couldn't be more proud of the superintendent as I am of you today. So, thank you.
We may get a picture of the superintendent.
Thank you.
Again, there's a lot of great things about serving on the school board, but when we recognize students, you know, with all the different activities in Duluth, is so fortunate to have everything from, you know, robotics to athletics to fine arts to theater to art shows and everything down in the elementary, from their after-school clubs to their, you know, wolf trips. And all of that is really rich in our district, so thank you. Next on our agenda is our public comment. And so, this is the part where we invite our audience to give a three-minute, and our clerk will elaborate on our guidelines. And also, the sign-up is in the back, kind of as the door as you enter where the M&amp;M's are. So that might be your incentive to sign up and speak to us. I'm going to read first our commitment to civility. So, ISD 709 Duluth Public Schools, it's our community vision and priorities for Duluth. We will build on our shared beliefs and values of unity, high achievement, and responsible use of resources to create Duluth Public Schools and classrooms that are safe, supportive, and inclusive. We will work to inspire every student to achieve their potential and prepare students to lead productive, fulfilling lives as citizens of Duluth and the wider world. The school board recognizes 11 tools of civility that will provide increased opportunities for civil discourse in order to find positive resolutions to the issues that face our community. These tools include pay attention, listen, be inclusive, don't gossip, show respect, be agreeable, apologize, give constructive criticism, take responsibility, be honest and care for others, and show your evidence and share your reasonings. And now Clerk Sedowski will also just go over the guidelines for public comment that are posted on our website and just an awareness of how that works for public comment.
So here's some information to know when you sign up to speak at our board meeting. Persons wishing to address the board will sign up before the board meeting listing their name and the manner in which they want to speak. And if you didn't get an opportunity to do that, we can give more opportunities to as well. If you have handouts for the board, please give them to the board secretary over here. Persons wishing to address the board will speak in the order in which they signed up. Persons addressing the board will have three minutes total. When speaking, the use of names or any information that identifies a specific individual is legally prohibited, and you will be asked to end your comments. Persons addressing the board may not merge their time in order to allow one person to speak more than three minutes. And then, a clip of the board, so I will start the stoplight timer at the start of each person's time. Green means go, yellow means wrap up, and red means stop. And then, the board chair will give you a single gavel tap when there's about 10 seconds remaining on the timer. And then, when the red light comes on, the chair will gavel to signal you to end. And then, persons addressing the board shall combine their comments to matters pertaining to the agenda or other matters relevant to administrative concern. And in the interest of respect for every public comment speaker, please hold any commentary during the speaker's time until they are finished.
Thank you. And just a reminder too, if you're coming to share public comment, you're really sharing that with the board. So we've got a table there, you can either sit at the table, and then you're addressing us as a board. And then, there's a microphone there. And because we do load up our school board meetings onto our YouTube site for others to watch, I know that sounds odd to you, but there are people who really love to watch school board meetings, as I always like to watch ours again as well. So, and again, the mic is there, and we ask that you use it. It'll take you some finesse to kind of figure out. You don't have to hold it really close, you can kind of hold it down by your chin a little bit and speak loudly and clearly. Thank you. So our first speaker, I always announce our first speaker and then kind of do an on-deck person. So Bob Bayless is our first speaker, and on deck is Parker Huber.
Good evening, everyone. I am Bob Bayless. My wife Karen is with me, and I are very, very proud graduates of Denfeld from the class of 1956. That means we're a couple of what they call old farts. We have got some very strong feelings about some things that are happening currently regarding the changing of the name of Public School Stadium. This has been in the works, we have found out, since 2019, and has been kept very quiet until just recently. What's been going on for over four years in preparing and coming up with ideas, we've had less than two weeks to commit to it ourselves, but we've been trying hard. We followed directions and submitted to the board our suggested name changes, which, number one, why not keep it the same? Why not keep it Public School Stadium? Don't change for the sake of change. Or secondly, why not the name just Robert E. Denfeld or Denfeld Stadium? I was told it's no longer a public stadium because of charter schools possible wanting to use it. Also, Denfeld owns it alone, to quote one of the board members who did respond to my email. Thank you very much. There's an old adage, kiss, keep it simple, stupid. And Walter Hunting Stadium slash Mark Hykenen Field is not simple. We have presented that to a number of our graduates in our class. Karen and I are on the class reunion committee. By the way, we're planning our 67th reunion this year. And we have not had a single positive reaction to that. Per board policy, item 810, which I don't know what, that was just reasonably adopted. Section 4A says that a name should assist visitors to orient themselves to the location. Does that name orient anyone? I don't think so. Since Denfeld owns the facility, since a change is felt to be necessary, since both Mr. Hunting and Mr. Hykenen already have been recognized by the school, they're both members of the Denfeld Hall of Fame, since the Denfeld name itself is very recognizable to many in the area, in fact, probably most, since two former coaches' names are not well-known already, will soon be forgotten. For example, take Wade Stadium. Anybody here know Mr. Wade? Or Wheeler Field? Who is Wheeler? Nobody knows. Since both of these gentlemen are very, very important to the history of Denfeld, Mr. Hunting and Mr. Hykenen, they should be recognized. But maybe on the pillars that have been proposed, in the proposal that's been presented to you, since most of the public will not remember the two names, it's going to be referred to as Denfeld Stadium. That's just human nature.
Thank you, thank you.
Sorry, I ran over.
Our next speaker is Parker Huber, and on deck is Eddie Pelopin.
Good evening. My name is Parker Huber, and I'm the Digital Innovation Specialist for Lowell and Moore MacArthur. For the upcoming school year, the Digital Innovation Department is being reduced to five specialists and one coordinator. This is not enough staffing to properly serve our buildings and classrooms. The elimination of these positions will cause disruptions in classroom learning due to delays in troubleshooting, significant reductions in digital innovation ability to mentors in classrooms, and setbacks in getting functional devices to students at busy points in the year, especially at the start of school year, September, and during statewide testing. Currently, the Digital Innovation Team consists of nine specialists and two coordinators. We understand that cuts need to be made somewhere, but we want to make it known that there will not be enough of us to do the necessary work with proposed downsizing. Our two coordinators work closely with department building and district administration. They oversee our learning management systems, Canvas and CSO, ensuring that both function smoothly. They are also contact points for digital curriculum resources like Wonders, Think Central, iXL, and the Modern Classroom Project. Our nine specialists are responsible for managing more than 11,000 students and staff Chromebooks across 17 buildings. Our daily tasks include collaborating with teachers to support effective and effective technology use in the classrooms, troubleshooting Chromebooks, issuing devices to students, and providing technology training to staff and students. At the middle and high schools, the majority of our day is already spent on Chromebook management. This includes working directly with students or staff to troubleshoot problems with their Chromebooks, locating misplaced Chromebooks, assigning devices to students as they enroll, collecting devices as they un-enroll, repairing broken devices, handling fees for damaged or lost Chromebooks, and managing daily borrowed Chromebooks. Any reduction in digital innovation staffing will seriously reduce our time to provide coaching and training due to mandatory nature of these baseline tasks. In the elementary schools, much of our time is spent assisting with the implementation of technology in classrooms, coaching students alongside teachers, helping students integrate technology into their learning and promoting the skills needed to care for the devices students use. Our roles are crucial to helping students gain proficiency with these devices so they can represent their knowledge during standardized testing, especially for students who have limited access to technology outside school and little other support using it. We have loved working with all of you for the past two years, and our hope is that we can continue to support you in these roles for years to come. Thank you, the Digital Innovation Team.
And our next speaker is Eddie Pelopin.
Hello, everyone. My name is Edward Pelopin, and I'm the Digital Innovation Specialist at Myers Wilkins and Lester Park Elementary. With positions being cut, this limits the time being spent assisting and implementing technology in classrooms. Our roles are crucial in helping students gain proficiency with technology so they can become the next generation of leaders. With the help of technology, students have increased their proficiency in math, reading, and typing skills. Digital learning showcases students' creativity and completing assignments in ways paper and pencil cannot. The Digital Innovation Team led coding camps a few weeks ago, and it was a success. Students wanted to learn more about coding and technology. Skills learned now will prepare our Duluth children in the ever-expanding fields that use technology, from engineering, coding, to doctors, and of course, teachers. But with staff being cut, this limits the interactions we can have with students and teachers on a day-to-day basis. This leaves teachers and students waiting for Chromebook issues to be resolved, software questions to be put on hold, and in-person strategic planning being put on pause. Whereas now, we make day-to-day connections with staff and students. Some of us are also coaches and technology coordinators at our respective schools. Technology will not go away. If anything, it's increasing each and every year. Our world revolves around technology. The children of Duluth deserve any and every opportunity needed to become the next superintendent, the next assistant superintendent, and most importantly, the next generation of teachers and leaders. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Robin Ryan, and on deck is Julie Ganches.
Good evening. My name is Robin Ryan. I'm the Digital Innovation Specialist over at Denfeld. Because of the digital innovation department go through, teachers are going to end up picking up the slack when we're not able to cover everything that we've been covering. Learning is going to suffer when the tasks that need doing go undone. Additionally, we are going to end up paying more for contracted services to fix avoidable problems because we didn't staff. We're also going to end up buying new devices to replace what we did not take care of. Our department has had a dual mandate since we were founded, and that is to help our district to teach and to learn better using technology, and also to maintain and distribute our 11,000 Chromebooks in this district. My counterpart from Myers Wilkins and Lester Park just told you about all the good things we've been doing at the elementary schools. That is likely to go away next year with the staffing cuts. At the middle and the high school, we are already spending a majority of our time managing the Chromebooks, maintaining them, troubleshooting problems, locating misplaced devices, assigning devices, all these things that just need to happen. We have also taken on repairing Chromebooks, which is not in our job description. But if we had not taken that, I believe we would have already run out of Chromebooks for this school year and not had enough to properly have devices for every student in the classrooms, and not enough devices for things like standardized testing and MCA's that all happen on Chromebooks now. Going forward, this baseline, just baseline maintenance work is all that we're going to have time for. We will not be in classrooms, will not be able to effectively do professional development, we won't be able to give adequate teacher and student support anymore. We already do not have a person at every single site. We have 13 elementary, middle, and high schools, and there are nine of us. Several of us are splitting across buildings already. There are also other sites we support, the Residentials, ALC most notably. Summer of 2021, when we were hired, it was originally decided there would be 12 positions. That's what's listed in the job posting that we provided for you all summer. That was cut down to up nine that summer. Next year, we've been told it's going to be five. And the year after that, we have not been assured that our department will exist at all. That is going to adversely affect this district. We know money is tight. But as a district, we need this. We could choose to go back to pencils and papers and books. That's a decision we can make, but let's be honest about that. That's a decision we can make, but let's be honest about that if that's what we're doing. Right now, if we continue to cut staff, we're not going to be able to train people in on how to use it, and we won't gain the benefits of what we have. We're going to be slowly losing the devices and the technology that we have because we are not maintaining it. Thank you for your time. We appreciate your consideration.
Our next speaker is Julie. And on deck is Maria Park.
Hi, I'm Julie Gantjes. Is that your name? I'm a parent of a deaf student. My son is a twelfth grader here at East High School. Duluth has historically had a really strong deaf and hard-of-hearing program. If you want to hear an amazing success story, I can tell you about my son's time in Duluth from kindergarten through eighth grade. He's really done wonderful. However, in 2019, we were concerned, parents, deaf and hard-of-hearing students, deaf and hard-of-hearing community, teachers, we came and talked to you about the direction of hard-of-hearing. Duluth at the time had three full-time, in-person deaf and hard-of-hearing teachers, and two were retiring. We wanted to make sure that the new teachers being hired would be qualified. Little did we know then how much things would decline for deaf and hard-of-hearing since then, since 2019. Virtual teachers for deaf and hard-of-hearing, it's so tough, I can't even tell you. I won't go into all the details, but they can't, they don't know our local resources. They can't help students connect with the local deaf community. They can't help interpreters, they can't help the school-related issues. This teacher has a video that has, doesn't have closed captioning, that interpreter is having an issue. There's just, it's, it's very, it's been very, very difficult. This district right now has one very overworked, in-person deaf and hard-of-hearing teacher and a virtual teacher that we've had a lot of problems with. Luckily, about two weeks ago, the district was able to switch my son to the in-person. And so, who's wonderful, very, very wonderful. And for the rest of the school year, I just really want my son to have what he needs to achieve his IEP goals. He's going to college next year. He's worked so hard and do not have the basic resources he needs. It's been really difficult. There are so many things I could talk to about the hub schools connecting these kids socially. The one thing, though, that I do want to touch on is moving deaf and hard-of-hearing teachers from being case managers to related services. I think that has been particularly damaging. That's been a change in the last couple of years. Until high school, Christopher's, my son, sorry, his deaf and hard-of-hearing teacher was his case manager from the zero-to-three program through middle school. I can't tell you how vital it is that a deaf and hard-of-hearing teacher is coordinating services and managing his IEP. Deaf and hard-of-hearing cannot be reduced to a related service. I could give a lot of examples, and I can give more information if anyone's interested. My son is graduating and going to UMD in the fall. He'll be studying science. I'm standing up for other students and families. The trajectory of the deaf and hard-of-hearing program has been on decline.
And our next speaker is Maria Park.
Hi, my name is Marie Pank, P-A-N-K. And Ms. Lofalkin, back me up, that my handwriting has not improved. My daughter's also deaf, she's in eleventh grade and has been receiving services from the district since she was one. This is the least effective year of services we've ever had. Even during COVID, we had virtual teachers, and that was fine for my daughter. But the virtual teacher that we have this year is underqualified. She is not good at ASL. She uses culturally insensitive terms. She has stopped.
You know, Maria, I respect your desire to share with us the needs of your students, and it is so important for us. But because, one, the definition of the teachers you're sharing is pretty recognizable because we have such limited teachers. So, I just really want to caution you to look at your notes. And please just share about, you know, what you, you know, what we can do better.
Thank you.
Without being about personal.
One of my daughter's goals is to use a videophone where she's unable to hear but is connected to an interpreter. We have the technology to do this, but I don't know how. So that's one of her IEP goals. Not everyone has that, so we wanted to switch to a different deaf and hard-of-hearing teacher to get some assistance with that, but we weren't able to. We were able to get additional IEP ASL services, so I appreciate that. So, in November and December and January, we were told that that goal was going to be accomplished. Her IEP was today, and no progress has been made on that goal at all. So if my daughter has a medical emergency, she can't get help. She doesn't know how to use this service. She's going to college as well. Right now, she's in TSEO classes. She'll be graduating next year. She can do so much, but she needs some assistance. What we were told was just keep that goal for next year. But that increases how many goals she has for next year in addition to being a senior and taking classes. I'm just, I'm concerned overall with the direction that the deaf and hard-of-hearing services are with the district, and some of those can't be helped, but I do think some of those can be helped. Not all families are going to be here to reach out and raise red flags and say that some things are getting worse. You may want to consider possibly doing a survey, possibly connecting with other families to get more input. Because all I know is a small piece of it. But I, but I hope the district overall is concerned enough to look into it and make some improvements. Thank you.
The next speaker is Erin O'Leary and on deck is Jim Olson.
Members of the school board, thanks. Digital Innovation Specialists are the lifeblood of our Chromebook initiative. Kids and adults alike in our building are dealing with the daily deluge of Chromebook issues. Lost Chromebooks, Chromebooks that won't power up, Chromebook disconnect with Canvas, mistakenly identified Chromebooks. We all know about the issues of any technology. Our Digital Innovation Specialists locate, restore power, and open the door for these mighty tools to work for our kids. From a quantitative perspective, forty-six percent of our students' devices have broken at some point this year, whether through mishandling or malfunctioning. It happens to the best of us. At our school, there have been numerous instances, daily, where students need to borrow a Chromebook after having forgotten their own. We've all been there. When these things happen, our kids are able to go to what I call the Chromebook store in our library where our Digital Innovation Specialist diagnoses and solves a simple problem or equips them with a loaner Chromebook if the need is more extensive. Our Digital Innovation Specialists are our first responders. Our district spends millions of dollars on Chromebooks. Our Digital Innovation Specialists are the reason their investment continues to bear fruit. Loss is what our kids will be left with if Digital Innovation Specialists positions are eliminated. Loss of access to learning. Loss of instructional time that we teachers are trying to figure out with a problem outside our wheelhouse. Loss of the tool that's most natural for so many kids. And reducing our current number of Digital Innovation Specialists to an even more itinerant handful is insufficient. Our kids' Chromebook needs are too immediate, too frequent, too extensive to be put off until it's their school's day to be served. We need to maintain our current number of Digital Innovation Specialists. This district has done an amazing job of prioritizing our kids' learning technology. With sufficient staffing of Digital Innovation Specialists, this district will keep up with the demands of our twenty-first century tools and help kids in Duluth Public Schools stay in step with learning. I urge you, please, maintain our current number of Digital Innovation Specialists. Thanks for your time.
Jim Olson and on deck is Marian Harla.
Good evening. I feel it's important to ensure that this board and the community are aware of the great work that our labor management process has accomplished. In 2005, the budget constraints resulted in our first elementary MOU. The negative impact on the student day became obvious shortly after implementing a framework that had four different daily schedules built into an eight-day rotation. Since the initial implementation, there have been multiple MOU changes. For the most part, the changes resulted in a daily learning experience that was even more disjointed and lacked the consistency and continuity that students need to have equitable learning opportunities across all subject areas. For the better part of twenty years, there have been multiple attempts to revise the elementary schedule, but none have succeeded, until now. I have been working on this issue under three different DFT presidents and more administrators than I can remember. It wasn't until Brenda Sparts and Ethan Fisher came together that meaningful changes happened. As the elementary director of teaching, learning, and equity, Brenda Sparts quickly understood that improvements were needed, and she worked with the administration to secure funding to make it happen. She then started doing research and led the scheduling subcommittee in establishing the priorities that would make positive impacts on the student learning experience. Ethan Fisher, our Duluth Federation of Teachers President, understood that for reform to be done right, it was going to be a long, detailed process. To achieve this, President Fisher held the line during last year's negotiations so that the process would happen through our elementary QLT rather than at the negotiations table. This allowed for all areas of the elementary teachers to be represented by the members of the subcommittee. President Fisher also understood the importance of hearing voices from different perspectives and that the resulting schedule would be one that would be more likely to be approved by membership. President Fisher also understood to make any plan work, it would need to happen without any layoffs. With this understanding, the subcommittee went to work on revising the elementary schedule. Under the leadership of Director Sparts and President Fisher, I'm happy to say that the elementary schedule MOU was easily approved by DFT membership. While the process and outcome were absolutely superb, I do have one regret. In the past, members of this board have been part of the labor management teams. I invite you to retake your seat at the labor management table so you can witness firsthand the other issues that we are currently facing, and you can hear directly from our educators and principals who are part of our labor management teams. Thank you.
Marian Harla, on deck is Thea Hansen.
Hello. My name is Marian Harla, and I presently teach at Laura MacArthur Elementary School. I'm here today in support of our digital specialists who work in our building. The digital specialists are a very important and valuable part of Laura Mac's program. Our person who works with us is Parker Huber, and he spends his entire time, all three days with us, in the classrooms working with teachers and students. He's able to work with a classroom teacher to help teach those students how to use their computers. Next year, up until now, we've, the second grade, first grade, and kindergarten have been using these little, I forget what they're called, little books. But next year, the second grades are going to be using Chromebooks. And we really need to have these digital experts working with our kids. If they are eliminated, we're going to see an expert in our building maybe a half day a week. And that's not enough time to answer questions. Do you have any idea when something goes wrong with the computer? The kind of looks, teacher's eyes spin because we're not the experts. And there are a few teachers who keep coming back and have to relearn what we forgot. And there are teachers, brand new, coming in and have to learn the new programs that are on our computers for us. And it's extremely important to have these people working with us. I wish we could have them every day because you hear the name of our person in the halls and, and we're looking for him because somebody needs him. So, please, 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 consider maintaining our digital experts. We need them, and they build great relationships with our kids as our kids learn to live in this digital world. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Thea Hansen and on deck is Cindy Miller.
Hello. Okay, I didn't come prepared for the speech. I was told to speak from my heart, so that's what I'm going to do. I'm here on behalf of the Digital Innovation Specialists from my building. I am a clerical administrative assistant, education support professional from Laura MacArthur. I am supporting all of the Digital Innovation Specialists that are here and speak on behalf, of course, of Mr. Parker. I met Mr. Parker seven years ago when I started working at MacArthur. He was a parent in my building. He has grown immensely in his position. He knows every child in our building and the other building. He works in that hall. I don't, I really don't think, I know the district has to make budget cuts, and I have to look at mine. But I think you have to look at the people and what they do, and the children, and what they're learning. Look at these kids, what they've learned, how they started, and you're cutting those positions. Where did these guys start? They started on computers. They started doing things. They started fixing things. You have to look at what they're doing. They have relationships. Our world is going digital. They're fixing things. If you put it all on the teachers and the staff, who do you think they're going to call? Who's in the office? Thea, can you fix this? Thea, can you do this? Or my principal, we'll take it on because we got it, but it's not our job. But we'll do it. But really, we need them. Eleven thousand students. Eleven thousand. And now you're going to add a whole other grade across how many elementary schools? That's a lot. And we need to help their professionals. Let them do their job. We can find the money. We can raise the money. If I need to go beat feet, I will go beat feet. I will beat the streets. I will find the money for you. They, they're professionals. We need it. Thank you for your time.
Cindy Miller and on deck is Brian Schilling.
Hello, members of the board, district administration, and everyone else. My name is Cindy Miller. I am the Library Media Specialist at Lakewood and Congdon Elementary Schools and the Content Specialist for Library Media Tech. I've taught middle school and elementary school libraries and in classrooms for twenty-eight years in Duluth Public Schools. I want to acknowledge, without saying anyone's names, two secondary media specialists and two elementary specialists who are here tonight. If you would stand in wait, please. Thank you. We're a department of seven. These people are here, five of us are here today. Two are doing professional development tonight and couldn't join us. Today, I'm here to talk to you about why we need full-time media specialists in our school libraries. In this library, where you are right now, at Duluth East High School as well as at Denfeld High School, the Library Media Center is only staffed by licensed media specialists for fifteen hours per week. People are in this building and at Denfeld from before eight AM until after nine, around nine PM. That's sixty-five hours per week, and someone is in this room for only fifteen hours in a week. All of the ninth-grade science students cannot visit the library for a research project. All of the English classes cannot visit the library for regular book checks. All of the English classes cannot visit the library for regular book checkout. The needs of our students are not being met. Lincoln and Nordean schools are only staffed by a licensed media specialist, the same that is in Vai schools, um, for twenty-two and a half hours per week. Digital citizenship lessons, critical in adolescent's turbulent social media world, are hit and miss without a consistent curriculum integrator. Research skills, citing sources, computer science, reading promotion, and other lessons cannot be equitably taught with the time limits on these teachers. The media specialists are spread too thin. In our elementary schools, on a fixed schedule, media specialists see students for thirty minutes every four days on a rotating schedule. In most schools, media specialists have had to flip-flop between book checkout and lessons because there isn't time to do both in that half hour. Most teachers have nine classes per day, leaving no time for collection development, repairing, weeding outdated or culturally inappropriate books, or maintaining a robust website for student research and exploration. To date this school year, in our elementary school libraries, eighty-seven thousand five hundred seventy-four books have been borrowed, returned, shelved, and shelved for the next firework. This did not happen by magic. It takes a lot of time to do it right. While the newly approved elementary specialist schedule that Jim Wilson talked about will provide time for media specialists to plan and integrate technology skills into their lessons, there still isn't time for managing the collection and harnessing the online resources needed to educate children today. These media specialists are spread too thin. What can you do? I'm talking fast now. Okay, first, encourage district administration to make a change to the staff in our media centers. Once the professionals are in place, we can talk about many other things.
You can send that to us, too.
Okay, I will.
Thank you.
Thanks. I just want, one more thing, sorry. I want to mention that the legislation is, uh, legislators are talking about this right now, and I encourage you to support that. Thank you.
Brian Schilling is next, and on deck is Amy Rodmeyer.
I got my own timer, too. Thank you, members of the board. I'm Brian Schilling, Library Media Specialist at Piedmont and Stone. I'm here to talk about School Library Month, to bring awareness to our media centers and library media specialists. I've been in LMS for twenty years with a master's degree in educational media and technology. I care deeply helping students become active readers, lifelong learners, and most importantly, good people. I'm very much concerned, as I know you are, about how our children are not reading at grade level. I'm constantly concerned about the bombardment of noise and anger on social media that is affecting our youth. I worry about the overload of information that is filled with distortion and quite frankly, hinders their time to just reflect. The school library is the antithesis of all of this. It is a safe space for our children. Let me share a few examples. We create a place of imagination. Every December, I take my kids on the Polar Express train ride with bells and whistles and smiles on their faces. Two, we are specifically trained to provide high-quality research projects using the Minnesota Online Database Pebble Go instead of dubious sites like dot-coms and Google. We are high-tech centers that are teaching coding along with responsible digital citizenship. We listen to stories that comfort and transform each other, opening doors to conversations on things like disability and colorism through books such as Out of My Mind and Soy. So they see themselves and learn from others about acceptance. Media centers are a hub in a communal space that are welcome up to all. We practice social skills and how to work together with different viewpoints, and I believe that goes a long way to mental health. But this comes with careful planning, time, and expertise, and brings me back to why I'm here today. I'm very thankful to our district admin that gave us the time to work on our collections, investing in more diverse library books, and an approved elementary schedule. I'm trusting the district will continue to provide the direction to work collaboratively with us and continue to invest, just as the city of Duluth is with their public libraries. In one instance of critical need, our secondary LMS is still split between two buildings, which has resulted in a reduction of services to students and staff. Doors are closed to those space, face, spaces in certain days. And the ability to impact student learning and create meaningful programming has been greatly diminished. The door was always open to me with my friend and I at Denfeld High School in the nineties, where we created the first computer club and the first website for Denfeld High School, which I'm very proud of with the media specialists. At this time, I was given a huge opportunity. I wonder about all the students just like me now who could thrive if given the opportunity. I look forward for more conversation with you on future ready libraries with full-time media specialists. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Amy, and on deck is Tim Doyle.
Hello, school board. Thanks for having me. Uh, my name is Amy Rodmore, and I'm a media specialist at the Residential and Treatment Schools here in Duluth, in the Duluth School District. I've been a media specialist for five school years, and during that time, I have taught at seven of the schools here in Duluth. I was hired last March to start working at the Residential Treatment Schools. And maybe people don't know what those are, but they were a key piece in making the math work for the new elementary specialist schedule. Back in March when I started, I've shared pictures of what those schools looked like. They're not the old school libraries looked like, and they're not the only school libraries that I've started teaching in that have looked in similar disrepair, similar shape. Um, of those three schools, one school library had no books in it. I was a school librarian, hired a good school librarian, and I had no books. One school library had two carts of books, and the third had books that were many more than twenty years old, and were not exciting for any kid to read. And the question is, why does a school librarian, a school library within our district, get in that sort of state? The question is twofold. One, a lack of sufficient funding to more than like replace books that get lost. But the other key part is the fact that we don't have school librarians staying at the Title I and the Residential Treatment Schools consistently over time. Since I moved to town, there's been so much turnover in those slots. So I've worked in Myers, you know, Myers-Wilkins, Laura MacArthur, all, you know, Piedmont, I've seen taught at, all those schools, there's been so much turnover. And the elementary new specialist schedule makes so much progress in improving the situation, but it doesn't get us over the finish line because it's still asking the Title I schools to be paired with the residential schools. The other schools in the district, they get a full-time librarian. Under this new plan, Lester Park, Lowell. But the, the map was created to encourage specialists to pair the treatment schools with the Title I school. And that's ending up with, once again, positions that are not sustainable. You know, if media specialist takes that position and then spread between multiple schools that are challenging, you know, more challenging to teach at, that's not gonna be a sustainable job, and the kids at those schools are gonna be short-changed. So I'm asking for an increase in that. With just a half more media specialist position, we can reach a situation where that isn't the case. Where there is a single librarian who's just devoted to Piedmont, a single librarian just devoted to Myers-Wilkins, a single librarian just devoted to Laura MacArthur, hopefully less turnover. Okay, how about that?
Our last speaker tonight is Tim Doyle, unless there is someone in the audience that will want to, um, add, because we do that. Can't hear you.
Hello, everybody. I'm Tim Doyle. I'm a member of the committee for the Public School Stadium Renaming Committee. Nice to see you all again. So, uh, for the past thirteen years, there's been a window of opportunity for an individual or group to lead an effort to rename Public School Stadium. Our formal group of educators, students, and community members navigated a very thoughtful, inclusive, and well-planned proposal to arrive here today. Using words such as "immeasurable" and "overwhelming" have become a common theme while describing the community, general public, and alumni support for our Public School Stadium renaming proposal, including the Heritage Celebratory Piece. Hundreds of alumni and community go to voice public support, the local media, including the strong support of the Duluth Movement's editorial board, and suggestions coming in daily through our Heritage of Public School Stadium email has signified for the community that this is something bigger and better than we could have ever imagined or planned for. We have learned of at least eight Denfeld football graduates who played in the NFL. Some of the most important meetings, components, and learnings within our proposal have been a line-by-line review of ISD seven-nine's facility renaming policy with district administration twice. My own learning about Walt Hunting's dedication to starting African-American women back Bobby Daniels during a time of segregation and racial oppression. We surveyed Denfeld Gold Student Leadership Group, reviewed these surveys with these students, and created an action plan that has already started with the students owning the entire design of Phase One for the renaming and heritage plan. This includes an iconic sculpture of our most recent NFL star, C.J. Ham. Researching local athletic facilities, you've learned that most have multi-namers admission. Richard Grex Field, Jim Olowski Stadium for UMD. Terry Igudal Field, David Hill Stadium for Proctor. Centriste Stadium at Corey Beach Field for Hermantown. So, this has opened up a very unifying platform for our overall Denfeld community. Here are just a couple of comments of support. I had to take the names out here because I had names in here, so I didn't realize it could help. The leader of the Denfeld Central Alumni says, "Thank you for not forgetting us when everyone else has." The captain of Walt Hunting's last football team says, "Coach Hunting was among the finest men I ever knew, a gentleman on and off the field. He was a modest man of character who had such a high personal standard, he wanted to succeed for him." The president of our Duluth Federation of Teachers, "I had the good fortune of taking several classes for Mr. Hyken and Wella Hunter. He was an amazing teacher and is an even better human. I became a teacher because of him. Excellent choice for name the stadium and field."
No, you can, ten more seconds.
Okay, um, last one, local retired judge was a bench warmer. Um, and he said that Marv Hyken made him into a good citizen's son, hot father, and husband. We are really excited in the coming weeks to share the students' conceptual designs and working with the general public to make sure we collaborate on this with everybody.
Our next speaker, can you state your name because you're not on our list?
Uh, Rieger, Bichette.
Spell it.
Uh, R-I-E-G-E-R, B-I-C-A-G.
Hello. Um, I just also want to speak out with the, for the Digital Innovation Specialist. I was working with technology, so I've often worked with a lot of them, and I don't know if it's clear just how much they do that they took off of technology, having to be able to not worry about Chromebooks every day and realize that they can handle most of the major problems, saved us so much time and money. And thinking of just the repairs of it, overall, I helped out with digital innovation to repair over two hundred Chromebooks. That's at least two, over twenty thousand dollars, if not more, saved by the district because of digital innovations alone. I just want to say that we need the positions or else these Chromebooks are gonna get lost, misused, damaged, or just not, first of all, not used. And that's why I do not want to see the district wasting money on Chromebooks to just not use them. We could just hire people to help out. That's all. Thank you.
Any other speakers? Thank you all very much. Board members, that brings us to another, and the next item on our agenda. The next item on the agenda is the reading, communication, and petitions, and we've had none. So that makes, um, us move to number eight, which is Report of the Superintendent. And that has some components underneath where we get reports from our students, school board reps, our superintendent's report, and then a review of our upcoming meetings. So I'll look to Superintendent Magus, and again, the superintendent's report is also a really important part of our, um, agenda.
Sorry. Um, so for my superintendent's report today, uh, we have a number of topics. First and probably most exciting are the student representative reports. Uh, we have some updates on strategic planning, but also talk about budgeting and things like that. Some, to some degree, rest, or some of our decision-making is, is made related to budgeting priorities. Uh, some legislative updates, or everything going on in legislature and how that impacts some of our choices. Our bond, a bond rating update, which is some very positive news, as well as some very positive news about our district ride graduation rates going up. But let's first start with our student representative reports. And we have Elsa Priest and Lauren Molitor from Denfeld High School and East High School, respectively. I'm not sure who went first, last, or after, whatever.
Thank you, y'all.
Okay, thank you, Elsa.
Yeah. So we have been starting up a new quarter after our spring break two weeks ago. Um, one aspect of this school life has been especially noticeable is our teams have been doing well this spring season. Um, History Day is going to national, sending Ola Akoro, Cece Stender, Anna Berry, Lea Coleman, Sarah Rechtinwald, Sam Phillips, and Garen Hackburg. And seven members from the speech team are also participating on the state competition this week. Knowledge Bowl went to state over break and got twelfth overall. And then our United Athletes went to Coquet for our first Invigils Games on April three, the first. And then we're participating in the Unified Basketball Invitational on, in Proctor on May fifth. And our big East Unified Event, the Track and Field Invitational, is scheduled for May third, May twentieth, sorry. This week is Mental Health Awareness Spring Spirit Week planned by our Source of Strength Club. We have a Jersey Thing Dance on Friday at East, and we have prom on Make Your Teeth at the Deck. Um, Senior Decision Day is May first. Auditions for the higher musics have been going on this week. Applications for our sixth-hour student government have also been given out, along with applications for the Scott Anderson Leadership.
Excellent. Thank you for your work. Lauren?
Um, due to several scheduling conflicts, Mr. Tuckton and I did not have time for our monthly meeting to discuss the happenings of Denfeld, as we usually do, so this report will be shortened sweet instead of my full, long-winded report. Um, Denfeld students came back from spring break, and the sophomores and juniors completed the annual MCA testing. Sophomores had English and will be completing the Science MCA in May, and juniors did math. The school operated on a block schedule similar to what we use during finals, which combines class periods to make classes one hundred minutes instead of the usual fifty. On Wednesday, students went to classes one thirty-five, and students, and Thursday, students went to classes two forty-six. Denfeld also hosted its Denfeld Village Event on April nineteenth, which allows student entrepreneurs to sell anything that they've made. Items sold included, but were not limited to baked goods, student-made artwork, sound items, and more. I was able to talk to freshman Nissa Johnson, who sold hands-on items, and here's what she had to say, quote, "Personally, the Denfeld Village went really well, with there being a lot of friendly people there wanting to support us vendors. The variety of skill and talent was quite impressive. I was able to sell around one hundred dollars worth of my materials to fellow students, teachers, and community members. My most popular item was my mini stuffed animal frogs, which I sold out of. The atmosphere was very positive, and I appreciated how nice everyone was when buying, selling, and looking," end quote. On Wednesday, the twenty-sixth, AKA tomorrow, sophomores who didn't attend the College Barrett in March will be attending Construct tomorrow, along with any interested juniors and seniors. At Construct tomorrow, students get hands-on look at jobs in trades such as construction, HVAC, various electrical jobs, and more. Now on to activities. Robotics went to Worlds, as we heard about earlier in Houston, Texas. They were able to meet and work with teams from across the world, including but not limited to Canada, New Zealand, and the Netherlands. As far as I know, they made it to match sixty-seven. Um, the cross and track, along with softball, have just started their seasons, and from what I've heard in halls, it sounds like everything is going well. And it wouldn't be a Denfeld report from me without something about the speech team. Five members will be making their way to compete and watch in the state tournament on Friday. Our captains, Maddie Watson and Reagan Kern, will be speaking, as they were both section champions. Well, Nissa Johnson, Natalie Anderson, and I will be attending to watch and cheer on our captains, as all three of us were fourth-place first alternates in our respective categories. In theater, our theater department has been working hard rehearsing for our spring musical, Chicago, which hap, which happens to have an excellent cast, most of which are speech kids. Um, they have been working hard to make this a great musical that you will not want to miss. Chicago opens on May eighteenth and runs through the twentieth at Lincoln Park. Chicago opens on May eighteenth and runs through the twentieth at Lincoln Park Middle School. That's all done.
Excellent. Thank you both for representing the student body so well and to remind us of many of the great positive things going on in school. I think those activities are tremendous and I wish that I had a mini stuffed frog myself. Um, no, but the, it sounds like a wonderful event. My next area is really, go ahead, sure.
Um, I was just wondering if there's any follow-up on the Equity Manifesto? Did you all get some opportunities to work with? Is that sort of starting to get?
Um, um, yes and no. So we, we, I met with our principal prior to that and we weren't able to meet again. And we haven't really, I guess, like gotten our way, you could say, but we have like, like, I don't know how else to explain it. But we have been working together to plan for our upcoming year, so that's good. We've had a lot of opportunities to work together. And, um, yeah, we're doing interviews for next year's student government this week.
Excellent. So you're negotiating to come to a compromise?
Yeah, yeah.
Good, alright. Thank you, thank you.
Thanks for the question and I did check in with Principal C. Rowe as well, just to make sure that there was continued work there. And she felt like things were moving along favorably and so we hope to see continued progress. Um, as far as the next section, reporting on our strategic planning. Uh, there are three strategic directions that we have charted out through some of the work that we've done. Uh, and this has been deep work over the past year with our, a lot of input from staff, a lot of input from students, a lot of input from families as well. And really, there have been multiple phases of this, just as a reminder, that we've started with a small group conversation, drafting some statements. And then also then working with survey work and then it came back as far as more drafting by our team, broad team. And then it went out for another survey and we used the survey information to further refine our strategic directions as a district. And these really encompass what we, what we plan to move towards as we move towards our desired daily experiences for our students. So really, that comes down to supporting every student, advancing equity and improving effective and efficient systems. And, um, our team was working on that actually as of today. So as far as supporting every student, the, the statement we have, that's kind of the summary, that'll be part of our pamphlet. And this is still a bit of a draft, but wanted to give people a preview. Duluth Public Schools, we utilize a multi-tiered system of supporting students to improve instructional practices, best meet the needs of every learner. Educators will work together to determine students' learning, behavioral and social emotional strengths and challenges. Strategies will be implemented to create positive learning environments. And students will be provided extra support to grow and improve through intervention and enrichment. So really, we're trying, we, we work to take, based on the feedback, take the first statements were kind of education jargon buzzword salads. And so we work to make it more approachable for people in general. As far as equity, advancing equity. Duluth Public Schools will be a place where everyone feels a sense of belonging and accomplishment. We're committed to strengthening relationships and building trust with all communities. To accomplish this goal, we will create an equity implementation and accountability plan to increase our ability to think, behave, work and lead with an equity mindset. As part of this plan, all staff will receive ongoing diversity, equity and inclusion training. And then finally, improving effective sys, effective and efficient systems. That was formerly under transparent allocation of resources and strategic planning work. But improving effective and efficient systems, Duluth Public Schools will engage in ongoing effort to improve support services, processes and resource allocation. We will focus on recruiting, hiring, growing and retaining highly effective and dedicated staff to educate, support and inspire our students to achieve, achieve their full potential. We provide clean and safe environments for children and create physical settings that are appropriate for learning. We'll also create a budget that meets the educational needs of our students. To do so, we will implement a budgeting forecasting model that aligns our resources with our district priorities. So, under that particular piece related to allocation of resources. There are challenges when it comes to resources, particularly with our ESER funding coming to an end. You've probably read many, many articles from different districts across the state where there have been significant layoffs and budget reductions of millions of dollars. We have tried to do our best to make sure that we have some, some cushion and or off-ramp from, from the spending. Uh, we have allocated funding from, partly from the sale of the historical Central property, as well as the sale of Central on the Hill to put money towards technology. And which then allowed us to keep, um, many of the ESER positions that were slated to be cut. And so we were able to keep over half of our ESER positions. Uh, and because the ESER money was particularly intended towards, um, first and foremost, it was meant to be focused on learning. Uh, learning loss or actually finishing unfinished learning and supporting our students academically. And second, thinking about the social emotional needs of the students. So we had to make some tough choices and there were some things that we had some reduction. We didn't eliminate, uh, any of the positions, but we did keep them. Um, there, there has been some reduction in the areas we know and heard tonight related to digital innovation specialists. Um, but we did keep all, we, we had to prioritize the reading interventionists and the mental health practitioners that were part of the, the primary function of that ESER money. I hate to see reduction, I hate to see reduction in those positions. We could use all of those positions and more and still not have enough to fully meet the needs of our students. And so it's important as we think about that budgeting process, that we remember the old adage, we, we can do anything, but we can't do everything. And it's hard because there are certain things that we are having to prioritize over, over others. And I know that's very difficult for, uh, the staff that are affected and the students that are affected. But we try to do our best to make sure that we mitigate negative impact. But that improvement of effective systems, it's also part of what we've worked on with timelines. And you'll hear some things in our HR finance report about very advanced timelines for posting of positions. Quite often, our positions weren't posted until May or June or over the summer because of some of the timeline pieces. We're far advanced from that and we've actually have many, many, many of our positions posted so that we can get the best educators into our buildings right now. But we continue to focus on other improvements, whether it's, uh, scheduling, uh, or putting our budget in place so that we can have cycles of replacement. Those are all different things that we work on under this category of strategic directions. As far as your work as a board and our work together, our, our next work session is scheduled for May eighth, where we'll finalize that mission, vision and values work. And at that point, we would be approving the strategic roadmap at our May board meeting.
May ninth, may ninth, just to prove.
Oh, sorry, May ninth. I apologize, my apologies. Uh, May ninth is the meeting. We were scheduled to approve the roadmap at this meeting, but because we had issues that impacted our, our most recent board work session, we had that delay. Any questions on that portion? You go. Legislative update, uh, as you know, we have a lot of lobbying efforts at this very important time. The House omnibus bill passed late last week and the Senate is finalizing theirs at this time. There are a wide range of policy provisions at this time that are of interest to all of us. Uh, there are some things in there related to mandated education around American Indian students and changing the name of Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. Something that we do here in our district already by having it as a state piece, I think is important from an equity standpoint. Uh, there are also other pieces within the legislation related to, um, different, different mandates. Uh, for example, things related to unemployment insurance for hourly workers and things of that nature that will have an economic impact on our district. Uh, I would say that many of those things are things that we all strive for, but we also have to make sure that we have, uh, funding from the state. If we're going to be investing additional millions and millions of dollars into these things, because if the state increases our, our funding ratio, but then we have all the new mandates in place. That will basically eat up all, or maybe even more than what is provided in additional funding. And we want to make sure that we are able to have that additional funding so that we can do things like add back some of the positions that we had to consider for reduction. So really, our budget forecast is based on, uh, to some degree, we have to look at, at a potential rainy day forecast as we move forward. We want to prepare for what can be challenged, but be very hopeful at the same time that we're going to have some funding and things like that that will allow us to do things in new and different ways. So I urge people to stay engaged in that, that work with the legislature and understand what's moving forward and stay in contact there. Two good news pieces to wrap up my report. One is our bond rating. Uh, Moody's, which is an investor's service, basically kind of like a credit rating for big organizations. Uh, has upgraded the district's issuer rating to levels from A three, I'm, I'm sorry, to, to A three from B double A two, which is a pretty big deal. Basically, it's saying that we went from being in a struggling financial shape, uh, when, when, uh, when we transitioned. Uh, there had been some turnaround before I came, but there's been a lot of hard work that's happened since then too. Uh, but we were, we had a budget server, budget, um, fund balance of, of three to five hundred thousand dollars. And we're, we're up closer to where we need to be. Where we need to be is probably closer to ten to fifteen million and we're approaching ten million dollars in our fund balance. So that gives a little bit of cushion, but as, uh, as, as our executive director Zunich reminds me, that's about enough to pay our salaries and bills for a month. So if there was some kind of catastrophic issue, it's important for organizations to have that type of fund balance. But that has been done through a lot of hard work by the school board. Uh, I wanted to especially thank the board in general, but especially thank, uh, the people who chaired our business services committee. Um, member, former member Trinka and, um, current member Derek Eater for the work that they've done in leading that budget work. And then, this is what it's all about and this is everybody's work. It's not just the work of the high schools. But our graduation rate has, uh, jumped by considerably more than the state. Uh, the state had a, uh, slight increase. Actually, that, that, I must have misplaced on, on the state, but the state went up point two and we went up five point two percentage points. So, uh, we've had very significant increase in our, our high school graduation rate, the four-year graduation rate. Uh, the grade has gone up both here at East High School, it's gone up at Denfeld and it's gone up district-wide for nearly every student group that we have. So when we, when we break it down by different demographic groups, we're seeing increase in all those groups. I would say it's not time to rest on our laurels too much though, because when we look at which students have struggled the most historically. We see that those groups have had a more challenging time making up where we were pre-pandemic. But our graduation rates are now actually above what they were pre-pandemic. So we are moving in a positive direction. That's thanks, can't just say thanks to the high school teachers, but thanks to them too. But it comes on, on the work done by our middle school teachers, our middle, or elementary teachers and all the staff that support in the school. So very positive news to end my report.
Thank you. Any comments, questions on the report from board members?
Yeah, just, uh, thank you again for a thorough report there. Superintendent Magus, I just wanted to touch on, um, the legislative update. And I'll just be a broken record on this one being, we only have one month until the session ends on May twenty-second to, to advocate at the state level. And, uh, I know, uh, many of us have had the opportunity to be down at the Capitol as well as Superintendent Magus. And, um, uh, even last week, we were down there and just want to remind folks that our local legislators, as well as other legislators around the state. Are really recognizing the effort from the Duluth Public Schools to be down at the Capitol and, and being vocal on lots of issues, as well as telling our story for our school district as well. And what our needs, our concerns are. And I, I know some folks that are out in the audience have had opportunities as well to be down there. Um, uh, thank you to Ethan Fisher with the DFT for being down there many times, as well as with us, um, during the lobbying days with, uh, St. Louis County. But, um, just want to remind people that there is time to still contact your elected officials and they want to hear from us. And, um, on, in our platform that our school district is lobbying on, the different issues that as a board we pass to lobby on. Um, is on the district website as well. And just again, it, it really does make a difference, uh, when, um, our local elected officials, uh, as well as other leaders are, are hearing from us. From teachers, from, from other staff and, and just really showing, uh, the support for, uh, the needs of the Duluth Public Schools. So just kind of a reminder, we got one month left before the legislative session. Chair Local and I have enjoyed many trips down to the Capitol and, uh, and, um, so just a reminder that we all have a voice in, uh, advocating for the Duluth Public Schools.
Thank you for letting me at that, um, as well and reminding everybody. And I appreciate the partnership as well on, on our lobbying efforts, especially some of the joint efforts we've had with the, the Duluth Federation of Teachers. And as we continue to improve our processes, as I pointed out, we always are, are striving to work on our labor management process. And we've, uh, really received some, some positive feedback about that from, uh, the DFT and are appreciative of that. Uh, recognizing all the hard work that's gone into those efforts. I know, uh, some people wonder sometimes about board, uh, work with labor management process. We do have two board members that serve on our, our QSC, uh, meetings and that, uh, right now it is member, uh, Lawford Cap and, um, number Oswald. Yes, I did space for just a minute, but, um, really appreciate having that participation in labor management process.
Any other questions, concerns, but again, whoop, you have something to add?
Just realized I have one more slide that's kind of exciting. The overall graduation increase was five point six percent. American Indian students increased by over a percent. Our Hispanic and Latinos increased by twelve percent. Black students was two percent. Two or more races was a slight increase, but still point four, which was better than the state. Uh, our white students increased by five point eight five percent. Free and reduced lunch students were, were increased by three point, uh, one percent. And, um, basically many, many of our students have, have, uh, reached the pre-pandemic level. So that's in the public document, so I want to.
And didn't that just become available to us today?
Today.
Today?
Yes, so it was embargoed, we had to receive the information yesterday and then, uh, prepared it, uh, in an embargoed status and then we released it to the public today. And so I want.
And will there be another opportunity for the board, maybe at a town meeting down the road when we've got more?
Yes.
You know, time to sift through that all that we, we hear more about the, these, this data?
Definitely. This was meant more as kind of a celebratory sneak peek before we share.
We like it, we like it. We like it, we like it. And board members, just the next thing on, under our superintendent's report is always just to look at our monthly, um, board meetings coming up. And you can kind of look at that for the week of May first through May fifth. We're back again, is that just next Tuesday? If it is, we're in May next week. Ooh, ooh. And so May second is a policy committee and then our, our monthly committee of the whole, which we just set the agenda for. And I encourage all of us to continue to bring forward to Assistant Superintendent Bond's topics for committee of the whole. And again, I, I look forward to, to our policy committee and, and our HR business. You, you, we have really grown in meeting with your staff, district staff leaders and developing your agendas and, and moving those committees forward. So I appreciate that as well. That moves us to another agenda item, which is agenda item number nine, and that's the report of our standing committees. These are meetings we've had over the last month that we share out again here. What you hear tonight in these reports are things we've already talked about. And so it's just a chance to share it again here and, um, kind of get any other updates or input. So I turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Bonds, who does, um, lead our committee, committee, committee of the whole meetings.
Thank you Chair Local and I will, uh, provide a little insight. Our first presentation during that day was provided by Director Williams. Uh, she provides insight related to our Head Starts Grants. Some information will be shared later, um, during this meeting regarding that, so I won't go into detail here, but the presentation was provided by, uh, Director Williams during that, um, meeting. We also had to table one item, which was a senior. We also had to table one item, which was a senior board update that will come to the May 2nd meeting. During the meeting, we had a really fun presentation provided by Cindy Miller, who's here, as well as Jennifer Frostow from the Computer Science Education Center. It it was a wonderful time to just really, again, see some opportunities that our students are receiving with coding and, you know, having a chance to just share the camps that are, the coding camps that our students are experiencing. It was it was really a fun opportunity and board, the board also had a chance, myself included, had a chance to also program the little, I would call it the mouse. But it was a mouse.
It was a mouse.
It was a mouse, it was a mouse, and it was really engaging. But it shows some of the the innovation that we are trying to move forward and provide opportunities for our students. This is one of the things that we have been able to provide through the use of ESR dollars is to fund these kind of opportunities, these coding camps for our students, and we're going to continue to do so. But that presentation again was given and we had a chance to see and experience what our students are experiencing. And that was the meeting at that time. But there was a, because there's a lot of conversations related to Head Start, and I know we're going to have some information provided later, so I won't go into a lot of detail.
Any, any questions or concerns? I just think that all of us, I I think we probably all have, but watched that and watched our committee of the whole meeting from last month, because watching us work with our little mouses in partnership with Cindy's direction and the lesson plan for us was quite entertaining. We forget sometimes, and as we all do, as we should forget, that we are videotaped for every meeting we have, everyone. So we just kind of forget about it, and then when you go back and watch it and then you see us kind of having having fun and doing a project that our littles do in their classrooms, just, yeah, it was just delightful. So thanks, thanks, Cindy.
I would like to point out that Assistant Superintendent Bonds and I, I think, completed our little programming first. I think we were in the.
On the work.
Not to bring our salute to you.
Well, I think if you look at the video, you'll see it differently, but.
And I I think I need to go and work with the littles for a little bit to learn more. Amen.
We'll be bringing the Denfeld robot.
It gave me a great appreciation of the business robotics tools.
Thank you. So moving on to 9B, it's our HR and Business Services. So I'll turn it over to the chair of that committee, Member Dierke.
And it was wonderful to hear Superintendent Magus sort of talk about the wonderful news, sort of the highlight of that meeting. There were two, one of them was our Moody's bond rating, and then the other one was our new system that we have in place to look at our budgeting. So we had no guest presentations for the meeting, so we'll move on to departmental reports. And the first one we had was Human Resources. And I believe once we have one more individual start, I think in June, then Director Severance, you'll have a full staff for the first time. So that's something to be celebrated. And we also, in our, looked like with our non-certified staff, we had a net positive increase in the number of our non-certified staff. So that was great to see. Let's see, contract negotiations at the time of that meeting, I think Director Severance said we had six units that reached out, and you can look to see what those six units are on our agenda. But so far, we've been contacted by six bargaining units to be in that process, and we feel like we're in a good position through a lot of hard work to begin those negotiations. We also had a wonderful update for our Teachers on Call program. And this data looks from September of 2022 to March of 2023. And when you compare 2022 to 2023, our fill rate in 2022 was 52% for teachers. And in 2023, that fill rate was 78%. And that is wonderful news to hear, because when our teachers don't have to use their prep time to sub for their colleagues' classes, it just allows them to lower the stress level, have a better balance in their job, and be able to use the time dedicated to their prep so they can get in and teach great classes to our students. We did see an increase in our perifill rates. We doubled those perifill rates between 2022 and 2023. We started out in 2022 at 17%, and in 2023, we were at 35%. And those are still lower fill rates, but I was thrilled to see that we've doubled those rates for those perifills. If you look in our agenda, you can sort of see the work that Director Severance has done in breaking this data down into different categories by month, comparing last year to this year. And it's just some really interesting data. So I want to thank Director Severance for bringing that to the board so that we can see that. You can essentially look in the agenda from pages five to about page 10 to look at our teacher on call data. Moving on next, we move on to businesses, business services. So we're going to talk about enrollments and our enrollment data for April 2023. We are still have a net almost 57 students for what we projected our budget. So we are at 8,051 students, point three. So if you see that point three of students walking around, maybe help give them a hand. So it's great to see students are coming back to our district, and we are thrilled to see that happen. Moving on to our Child Nutrition Report, we have a lot of wonderful bids out. Most important to the eater boys is the pizza bid for school 2324. So that's wonderful to see that bid getting out. I'm sure my boys aren't the only other ones. And I would encourage the public to go ahead and take a peek at our Child Nutrition Report and just see the amazing work our Child Nutrition Department does. And we have many, 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 many positions open there. We would love to have you come and feed nutritious, healthy food to our Duluth Public School students. So if you're looking for a job, come on and and check it out. Of note for Child Nutrition Department, the Minnesota Department of Health came in and looked through our cafeterias as they do twice this year. They've completed that, they've looked at our kitchen. And all our schools continue to perform well on these reviews and have not had any serious findings in over 20 years. So my thankful and gratefulness is sent out to that staff. When we look at our, moving on next to our facilities management and capital projects, to no one's surprise, we're still working on track lane one at PSSF, PSS, so that's ongoing work. Denfeld clock tower is almost done. It looks amazing. Congdon Playground construction will be starting this year. And then the boiler at Stoll has been installed, and that's a huge relief. You can go ahead and look through the health, safety, and environmental, and then any reports that we've had year-to-date with OSHA. Of note is we do have a tremendous number of facilities positions open. These positions are important. They keep our schools clean and healthy and safe for our students. And every, the more people we have in our schools with eyes on our kids, it's always the best for our students. Moving on to our Technology Department report, you can peruse that. As usual, Bart is taking, and our team is taking wonderful care of our cybersecurity and our infrastructure. We have no bids or RFPs out for our technology, and that's kind of a new thing, because we sure have had a lot the last six months. There are, Bart also has listed on here, six monthly, six-month outlook for what has to be done. Of note is district-wide, we have $2 million in AV classroom upgrades. That's going to update 200, 200 of our classrooms and takes 50 to 70 days. And our department will get started on June 12th and work very, very hard through the summer. I would ask the public to take a minute and re-protecting our future, partnering to safeguard K through 12 organizations from cybersecurity threat. This is a huge budget budget implication for our districts, because we pay for insurance to protect our, if anything happens, right? We have money to be there to, you can't really repair when you have a data breach, but to protect our infrastructure and Bart and our whole team does a lot of work. And this was just a really great resource for the public to see what, how hard we work at making sure we keep everything safe in our students and employees' data private. Moving on next, we have our Transportation Report. And the bus is in, right? The buses, didn't you?
We rode, we rode on it.
How were they? Were they amazing?
We have one in.
It smells, it smells new.
Does it smell new? That will last long.
Yes.
Oh, that smell will change quickly.
True, yeah. But it was good.
Was it good?
Yeah, we rode on it to our district, the new business service office. It was great.
That's great.
It was a great, a great.
We've been waiting for that bus for a little bit, so that's wonderful news.
Tried to get a round of wheels on the bus, nobody wanted to.
I would have.
I imagine. That's great. So our transportation, we are, we we have some new software that's coming in. And our our team in transportation is working very, very diligently to get that, to get that software up and running. That has to do with our routing, our bus maintenance. We had some mechanics, we were short some mechanics. We're now staffed, and we are mostly caught up in our maintenance, and that's great. Coming before our, not on the consent agenda, but as part that we'll each vote on, are some resolutions, acceptance of donations to the Duluth Public Schools. Next, we have a resolution for acceptance of grant awards to the Duluth Public Schools. As part of our consent agenda, we have our Human Resources action item, and that's just listing up different positions. We also have part of our consent agenda is we have a clarification or a, it's a status change, Director Severance, for our utility person, too. There were some slight changes done to the job description.
Yes.
Okay, so Director Severance has kindly highlighted those in red for us, so you can go ahead and take a peek at that. And then let me just get to where I'm going next. Take your time. Now, this is when Director Zunich will come in and talk about our new way that we're going to look at our budget, and it's great. So.
Okay, so. Good evening. I'm going to stand because I'm excited. So this is our new budget management analytics view. And I'm going to be able to show you through the way this is set up. I can show you what we spent in '21, money we got in, money we spent in '22, the adopted budget that you adopted last June. And then here's my revised budget. So that is what I'm asking for your approval tonight. This information was effective as of January 31. That's when of '23, that's when we captured this information. Of course, a lot has changed since since then. But I like we have percentages of how we were trending, like in '21, in January 31 of '21, we were at 46.6%.
I'm just going to stop for just a minute. This is page 58 under the HR Business, 58, 59, 79, yep.
Great, thank you. So it offers great information. I love to analyze the data, where we are trending, how we are spending. It gives you the adopted budget, what we've received to date, and our budget remaining. So on the revenue side, after some analysis, we tweaked some numbers. And I will go line by line, but we, you'll notice that the total revenue that was received, received in '21 as of June 30, '21, was 126, 621.
Right.
In June 30 of '22, we were at 127, 961. The adopted budget was at 119. At that time, we did not have final numbers in our levy, and we also increased our ESR money. So we put the revenue in there. So now you'll see we are in alignment from the last two years. And now I'm asking for a revised budget of revenue of the group 31 million. So I just think for transparency purposes, this is really nice. So you can see, we can show our community, those are real, actual numbers out of the audit. And then also the same on the expenditure side. The adopted budget is here. I'm asking for a revised budget amount, 130 million. Again, you'll see we're in alignment here. In June 30 of '21, we spent 118 million in '22, 125. And I'm asking for an increase up to 130. So again, our ESR money, our property tax money, we did get a little bit of special education money, all has factored into this. On the expenditure side, we're showing the object series. And down below, because we are a big district, this district is always budgeted by program. So we also gave you that same information. It's all a lot of data here, but it's it's great data. And can you move the page down a bit, please?
Yes.
So this is your rep, this is Fund One. And down below is all the other funds, okay? Activity, other funds. So you see in Food Service, Community Education, Construction, Debt Service Trust, Internal Service Fund. The adopted budget last June for revenue was 917. I made no changes here. Keeping that the same, the same for expenditures, adopted was 924, or revised is 924. So it's staying the same. But all the funds together, before we had added ESR and fund balance money, we were to the negative of 868, 869. And now we are showing that we might be more balanced. So, you know, of course, a lot of audit work has to happen now. But this is just a snapshot of the entire product that we have. There's probably 20 tabs that all feed into this information. And I'm also able to, I haven't started it yet, but on the 10th of every month, I'm going to upload the information of Skyward. And I can feed it into here so I can have all of this data if I want to on a monthly basis. It's a lot. But I like the analysis and I like what it tells us.
And I think of note is looking at when you can compare the percentages, and you can see if, you can look to see if they're trending the same over a three-year period, or if you see big changes, jumps up and down. I just think it gives us a good doc, good idea of trend lines when we think about right here, right now, what percentage of our budget are we at? And I think it it just gives us a fuller, clearer picture. And I think once we figure out how to really show this to the public in a way that's really accessible, I think it will help our public understand how we spend our money here in the Duluth Public Schools.
Yeah. Capturing capturing those percentage trends is really a good way to look at, you know, our history and where we are trending going forward. And then when I come to you in June to present FY, the FY '24 budget, all this information will feed into that but that budget summary. And so we're using true data, okay? So I'm, you know, I'm very pleased the way it turned out. So anyway, thank you. I'm asking for your approval.
And is that on the consent agenda?
Um, yes, that is on the consent agenda. We have fundraisers on our consent agenda. When we move to 4C, we have our bids, RFP quotes. We have some, a quota for flooring installations and roofing labor, plumbing labor, and then some things for food and our bakery as well. When we look, we have no for 4D contracts, change orders, or leases. We show none. We have a district property update. That will be, that looked at what we were have going up at DSC, and then also anything else. Our Moody's bond rating, our superintendent spoke about that. I just want to take a minute and reiterate what it means in this sort of financial environment to have Moody's take your bond rating up to classifications and juxtapose, put that in juxtaposition with other districts that are going through huge layoffs because they didn't plan. Well, they, it's not that they didn't plan, they, they weren't in a position to be able to continue some of that work that the ESR dollars gave us. In education, we've had a lot of diligent work done by our former CFO, currently by our director, by our full administrative team, by the school board. Our Moody's bond rating going up is just, it's very exciting. And it it just speaks to how far the financial health of the Duluth Public Schools has really come. So I'm just super pleased. You can look at 5C for expenditure contracts, 5D shows our no, our no-cost contracts. We had no revenue contracts and no grant applications, and that was the end of our HR Business Services meeting for April.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So I was really happy to see that our credit score went up, that we have revenue, that we have a rainy day account that's kind of a little bit more substantial to our needs as a district. And I also heard that we need to grow it a little bit more, like it's nice to have that rainy day fund. Can you, is that, is that in here, or would that be somewhere else?
That is not in the revised budget. Is that what you're asking, that I? That, that is not in the revised budget. Is that what you're asking that I presented to you?
Yeah, I'm just wondering.
It's part of the analysis that I will provide in June to adopt the budget. I, I would not necessarily provide that, but I can. And it's, you know, all of that information is audited and of course available to anyone on the MDE website, what our fund balances are. But I can certainly do that work for you and show it to you. The district does have an eight percent policy and it is a commitment by the district to grow our fund balance. And I always do say it, between bills and payroll, we spend roughly ten to twelve million a month. So it's, it's a lot and it feels good to have something like that in the bank to support everything. As far as the Moody's rating, that is a great process. I had about a one-hour interview with the Moody's representative. Answered a lot of questions, the econ, the economic health in Duluth and our enrollment trends and, you know, I, you know, you would just have to be honest with them. And he was, thought maybe it would come back, you know, the same. But he had to go to a committee. We had to wait six weeks to get that information back and the committed, committee wholeheartedly said they're ready to be raised. So that was a, a nice post for everybody. So I wanna congratulate all of you too.
Thank you for all your hard work on this and thanks for that explanation too. That's good for our community. Did you know how we are working to grow that fund balance and where we can see it, so.
You're welcome. Probably, I mean, this is five years of very, very, very hard work. Very much so, yes. Yeah, the previous, you know, CFO, the, all the committees, I mean, they did a lot of hard work to get us there, so.
I, I too wanna say thanks and I think that foundation that's been put in place over the past five years with that work has been very, very important. And I think that some of the things that we're putting in place as far as effective and efficient systems improvements into the future that they, that you have done, Executive Director Zunich, related to that, that budget forecasting model, that's new. And also, our, our next efforts will be putting in place genuine replacement cycles for big-ticket items like the tables we sit at. Right now, they're eventually going to break down, but there isn't necessarily budgeting forecasted for how do we do replacements on big-ticket items like furniture, stage curtains, ovens in our, our kitchens and things like that. And that's, that's kind of the next step that we, we wanna look at so that we had technology on all those big-ticket items. So that we're not trying to scrimp and, and put things together in, in a way that's, that's not logical. So thank you for your systems thinking.
Thank you. Yes.
Yeah, I, I also thank you, uh, thank you for your report. But Director Zunich, yeah, you know, for those of us, David and, and Jill, who have been on the board for over five years, this is so exciting to see where we came and after sitting through other, other not-so-good forecasts in the past, so, so, so exciting. And I, I also just wanted to say, I really appreciate being, I don't sit on this committee, getting the, the technology, child nutrition facilities, those separate reports. So it's just really helpful for me to kind of dive into looking at them and then, then listening to the meetings. So, so keep those coming and, and really send the appreciation to the staff who are, your staff putting those together. I have just one question about the update on the teacher on call and this might be for anybody, I guess. Just how are we sharing that information with our, our staff, particularly our teachers, our school administrative staff who are often are working with teach, our subs when they come in and our principals. I kinda have, had, had people, actually just in the last month, a couple of different people come up to me just with their own thoughts on it and pros and cons. So I just am curious how this very good information, that more kind of data-driven information that I didn't have to answer some questions with is being shared out.
So that particular report is relatively new, so that hasn't been shared out. However, monthly we get reports very similar to that. It's not that extensive in detail. And we send those out to our teaching and reading directors who then share it with the principals at the schools. So that's about the extent that we push it out is to. And we also send it to our special ed director, kind of the whole cabinet, if you will, just to be able to disseminate that information.
We've shared some of the summary information in our labor management meetings too, in our UFC meetings. But I think now that this, this end of year, well, approaching end of year report is being done, I think it'd be good for as we close our first cycle of using Teachers on Call, it'd be good to, to send out to at least our, our our labor management groups for, for parents and teachers, since those are the groups that are most.
I think so too, because I think, you know, there's lots of anecdotal, anecdote, what's that word? I can't say that.
Anecdotal.
Anecdotal.
Yes, thank you. You know, out there and, and having this after our first year of using it would be, really solid information, would be really helpful for people.
Yeah, thank, thank you for your report and thank you Director Zunich. I just wanted to speak to that too, since I didn't speak to it earlier in the year. And I thank our subs for coming back to the district and signing up with Teachers on Call. I think that's, that's huge. And I think this data is, is very positive or it's good to see that, you know, we've kind of turned that corner and things are going much better district-wide. That said, I, I guess I just, anecdotally, I have heard stories where it's, there's still challenges for teachers signing up, where it's time-consuming and the process is maybe somewhat cumbersome. And also, I think the secretaries in the buildings kind of deal with some of that too. So hopefully, next year, and it looks like Teachers on Call is working and that's a good thing. But, you know, we can kind of address some of those issues that affect staff that, you know, make that part of the process a little more cumbersome, challenging than what they're used to in the past. But yeah, I, I was pleased to see that data and that information and hopefully we can, you know, keep those numbers going in the right direction and, and improve our numbers for parents.
I appreciate that. We always, always, always looking at ways to seek continuous improvement. And I think Melanie from Teachers on Call has been very, very hands-on as far as the work with the district and always looking at going out to various sites or analyzing problems or digging into some of the national data and looking at, at things that have worked in other places. They do a great variety of advertising and so I think as we always look at, at ways to improve, this is a system that, that is the right start, but it's, we still of course have, have ways to go with it, Melanie.
And I was just gonna do a shout-out to the tech, you can, to the technology report too. And because, like, I think it was, it must have been last week, because I listened to the HR business and then NPR is running a week-long, kind of in-depth look at cybersecurity. And one of the days I was listening, it was on schools and it scared me. But then I had listened to and had read the, I mean, read the whole pamphlet, but that whole information that BART gives us, it's just, you know, there are, there's these cyber actors and they're targeting educational systems. And when I'm, when I am frustrated that my technology can't always get me to the sites I need because I'm a debate coach and so some of those are pretty sensitive topics. And I always say like rats, but it's really a, a good thing, because I know it's because of our cybersecurity measures that BART puts in place and he's worked with me for other ways to open up doors for that. And then the other thing brought out in the NPR that I, I knew we were doing well is we have, because we've done what we've done, our insurance is at least in the ballpark. Whereas in this report, they are sharing just how much that has taken large school districts across the country into just real demise because of their not being able to have the technology direction and that we have, so. So thanks, it was good. Oh, that's, I suppose then I vote, right? Or no, now I introduce Rosie. So we're on nine C and I'll turn it over to Chair of the Policy Committee, Member Lachlan.
Great, thank you. So we had our policy meeting on Thursday, April sixth. And kind of just a reminder for the public again, all of our policy meetings as well as HR are on YouTube. And zeroing in on policies, all of our policies come in front of our policy meeting. They go to our school board for first review and then come back to our policy for a second review before they're voted on, unless we don't make any changes to pass policies, which we're gonna touch on with one of our policies today. But so we have a, a pretty straightforward policy process with all of our policies. How many times can I use the P-word? And so, this month, the policy for our first reading is policy five-one-six-point-five. This is a new policy. NSBA, our School Board Association, and MASA, our Superintendent's Association, it's a new model policy that they've brought forward to us. School districts are not required to adopt this policy on the use of emergency drugs for the treatment of drug-related overdoses, but can choose to. And so we, the purpose of this policy, as stated in the model policy is as a means of enhancing the health and safety of its students, staff and visitors, the school district will acquire, administer and store doses of opiate antagonist, specifically, I had to ask my doctor here how to pronounce this, Kirby, Nellicon or Narcan and administration devices or kits for emergency use to assist a student, staff member or other individual believed or suspected to be experiencing an opioid overdose on school property, on school district property during the school day. We did take out of the model policy, the section that says, or at school district activities. We may do that later on, but right now we wanted to roll it out with what we're able to do as a district. And so it goes on to go over definitions, it goes on to review different processes at, at the site level and training. And then at the end, like all policies, it goes over the, the legal and state statute references of this policy. And really wanna do a shout-out to Crystal Oker, who's our Health Services Coordinator and Laura Thurstead, Assistant Special Ed Director, for really reviewing it, reviewing it with administrators and principals and just doing a lot of the, the work to review these, this, this policy as well and help us think through how, how we, how we administer it as well at the different sites. So this is the first reading. This is a very critical policy right now for the safety of our students. And, and so this would be our first reading and then, and it will be on the consent agenda. Before I move on to the, the rest of my report, Member Sadowski or Members Anheim, is there anything else you'd add, wanna add about this discussion we had around this overdose medication policy?
I would just add, you know, I think this is a really important policy to have. I hope that we live in a world someday where we don't need Narcan. But the bottom line is it's in our, it's in our community and we wanna make sure that our community is safe, that our students are safe. I believe this is also an MSBA policy, model policy as well, so I think that out. You know, and there's no, there's no negative side effects to Narcan. It can only stay alive, so that's all I would add.
Yeah, NSBA again and MASP, MASA created this model policy and really are encouraging the school districts to move it forward quickly, so.
Can I just ask if, are, are we sharing the, even though it's in our first reading, the potential policy to staff? So much of this is teacher awareness, teacher training. I know there's some provisions in there for that. But are we sharing it with, with maybe at your quality steering committee? No? Yes, no?
Not necessarily. It just depends on the policy. Some policies we do share at the quality steering committees. And we definitely share them with all of our leaders, our principals and directors and coordinators to get their feedback before we move it forward to the board for consideration. And then once it's approved, we do share it in MASP to all the staff. And this will be one of those.
But, but we did talk about how we will be educating our staff on the processes.
And isn't that in the policy too? There's some steps and some guidance, yeah.
But that also was discussed at, at the committee's level.
And I think we've, as a policy committee and as a board, we've tried to treat each policy with relative equality as far as how we, we share it. You know, we had another policy recently that went forward that some people might have been kind of surprised about. But it's, you know, we have multiple, multiple postings, multiple advertisements, the YouTube videos. And so we have talked about maybe having a link to all of our board work, you know, which we have right on the website. And that's something that people can, can explore and research on their own.
So that was for our first reading. We did not have any policies for a second reading. But then number four was policies for review and that's policy five-one-three, Student Promotion, Retention and Program Design. And we last reviewed this policy in 2018. And because we are not making any changes on this policy, we can move it forward with only one policy review. And again, the purpose of, of policy five-one-three, Student Promotion, Retention and Program Design is to provide guidance to professional staff, parents and students regarding student promotion, retention and program design. And so there are not any recommended changes in that. And so we will just move it forward after it goes through our consent agenda. But then attached to that is policy, excuse me, a regulation. And again, really for us as a board, regulations are informational. We don't formally pass them. And this is how the different policies will be processed, if you will. And so, under regulation for informational purposes, and again, thank you Director Jen Larva and we had Maggie Kelly with our E-Square, one of our E-Square teachers was, was a part of this discussion. The regulation, the purpose of this regulation is to provide a student access to appropriate content when ready ahead on site-based grade level, with site-based grade level peers. So there were changes on, on the regulations and a part of that that you maybe looked over was also the acceleration request form, which is submitted to the student's principal, some different date changes. And so there are regulation changes that go with this policy that were reviewed with us more for informational. So that was the policy committee for April. We will be looking at and reviewing other policies as our family student handbook for next year is gonna be, is being revised and looked at. And again, Director Jen Larva is a part of that process. And so you'll be hearing more about that related to, and I bring my little handy dandy family student handbook with me as, as we move through that process and it gets approved in the next few months. So that was our policy meeting. Thank you.
Any other questions? That brings us then to our number ten, and just a general board committee update. Just any updates from any of your outside this, the policy, maybe the whole finance, anything going on?
I did, I did.
From what committee? Member Lachlan?
That's in my notes. I know I'm gonna be doing an update when I, with the resolution with the Duluth Public Schools Endowment Fund, but oh, I know what it was. It was just, Superintendent Meg has kind of touched on it, but yeah, there, there are two board members that serve as liaisons to the Labor Management.
there are two board members that serve as liaisons to the Labor Management Committee, the Quality Steering Committee, member Oswald and myself for this year. And you know, a lot was said about the elementary specialist changes and that. And we heard a lot about that through that process as well. And you know, thank you again, Assistant Superintendent Bonds. I know, you know, it's great having you co-chair the labor management process. And I enjoy spending those three hours every other month on, at those meetings as well as I know member Oswald does as well. So we are actively participating in that process.
Any other updates?
I think there were a lot of meetings that were rescheduled last month. There were a lot of us, you know, I know a lot of mine were, so yeah.
Well, I'll look forward to more reports.
I think the seven, I had a conversation with one of our committees directors and I think they meet tomorrow. But part of that conversation, because I did inquire about, you know, boys volleyball, what's going on there. And I think the state high school league is going forward with that. But there's actually no local, you know, club level volleyball here, you know, for boys or even in the region. So like some other sports that take time to find their way north or to this part of the country, I don't see that, and even see that as being something that we'd be looking at adding anytime. Even a cooperative arrangement between the two high schools. That's, that's down the road probably a few years, yeah.
Well, thank you. That's because member Sandholm sits on the Minnesota State High School League, which sometimes doesn't have a whole lot to report, but, but there are some things that are happening at the league. Even with, you know, best, best behavior, best respect, fan and player, being able to be compassionate and respectful. So there's lots of things. And then also, member Sandholm, I know you had, you and I had a conversation about the rotation. There is an opportunity for a Duluth school board member to actually sit on the advisory seven double A. And it's a rotating, and so what did you say? Duluts will come up like in twenty twenty-eight or something?
Yeah, it's a, it's a few years down the road too.
Yeah, they're four-year terms, so.
I'm sure that's kind of.
But, but so, that's an opportunity.
Our current district rep would be Tom Tusk in at Danville High School.
Okay. And then our next item is resolutions. And so we have just two resolutions to re, to read into our minutes. And I'll turn, the first one is Resolution A, so B dash four dash twenty-three dash thirty-nine five five. And that's donations, and I think member Loffler Kemp, yes?
I think this one's got donations.
Was that yours?
Yeah, I have, I have grants.
Is that because I have a call? Okay.
And she has, I just didn't want, they're not in order, that's all.
Yep, I, I. Oh, okay.
Yeah, so yeah, I will be dash four dash twenty-three dash thirty-nine five five, acceptance of donations to Duluth Public Schools. Whereas Minnesota Statute four six five point oh three requires a school district to accept donations by resolution expressed in the terms prescribed by the donor and fall. And whereas acceptance of the donations in accordance with the donor's terms is in the best interest of the Duluth Public Schools, now therefore be it resolved that the Duluth Public Schools does accept the below described donations from said organizations in accordance with the terms set forth herein. Be it further resolved that the Duluth Public Schools wishes to extend its grateful appreciation to these various individuals and organizations. And I see a lot of really lovely and generous donations on here. A couple in-kind donations to Lakewood. I see a thirty-six thousand to the Lester Park Foundation. I see a thousand dollars from the Irving Community Association to Lincoln Park Middle School. And a few others, so we will do a vote, vote for this one. Member Dirk Eater?
Yes.
Member Kirby?
Yes.
Member Loffler Kemp?
Yes.
Member Loffler?
Yes.
Member Oswald, I hear, I, I vote yes. Member Sandholm?
Yes.
One vote. Pass is six.
The man who passes six zero.
I, I second the resolution.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Oh, that's right.
Oops-a-daisy. Thank you, member Sandholm.
Now, those in favor of accepting the resolutions as we've been motioned and seconded, say aye, aye? Oh, no, we didn't roll call. I was wondering.
We're doubly accepting the funds tonight.
Very excited about the funds.
Then we're gonna go to our next resolution with member Loffler.
Just get a little computer ready before you go.
Okay.
I just wanted to double check with the, might have missed something, but with the consent agenda, did we need to have a separate piece for the head start or?
Actually, I skipped over consent, I haven't done that yet, so I'll go back and do it, yeah, I see that.
Yeah, we have avoided that.
No, I didn't mean to, I, I.
I missed number eleven. Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, good question.
Didn't mean to stall.
So the resolution, B four two three three nine five four is acceptance of grant awards to Duluth Public Schools. Whereas Minnesota Statute four six five oh three requires a school district to accept grants by resolution expressed in the terms prescribed by the donor and fall. And whereas acceptance of the grants in accordance with the donor's terms is in the best interest of the Duluth Public Schools, now therefore be it resolved that the Duluth Public Schools does accept the below described grant from this organization in accordance with the terms set forth herein. Be it further resolved that the Duluth Public Schools wishes to extend its grateful appreciation to this organization. And I'm excited to just highlight a couple things here. Many of the grants are from the annual Duluth Superior Area Community Foundation, the Duluth Public Schools Endowment Fund, which I'm the board liaison on. And so once a year, again, there's an opportunity for our schools and different staff to apply for grants between five hundred to two thousand dollars. So what you see here is about thirty-five thousand dollars worth of grants that are coming to us from the Duluth Public Schools Endowment Fund. Thirty-two grants, or there's twenty-two grants that were, are either building-wide or individual between five hundred to two thousand dollars on a lot of creative efforts. And to schools all across our district as well as our residential treatment programs. So just highlight that. I'm really excited about the work that our staff did to write those grants. The other one that we're approving is a PBIS grant that Rachel Papa from Lincoln Park Middle School wrote for a thousand dollars and decides the Duluth Public School Area, Duluth Superior Area Community Foundation grant. So I move Resolution B four two three three nine five four, and I thank everyone for writing those grants.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by member Loffler Kemp, second by member Eater. All those in favor of accepting our grant, grants, friends? Say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. So I'm gonna go back up down to number eleven, which is just our consent agenda. And you'll know that we had a removal from our consent agenda that was approved. And so I'm just looking for a approval of our consent agenda. That's the next one, I'll get to it, I'll get to it.
So move.
I have to go backwards. Move by member Eater to, to, to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second? Second by member Kirby, all those in favor of accepting the consent agenda. And we've all looked at that and know that it has all kinds of good information, then we don't have to go. Okay, so all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we're on number thirteen, and I realize, but I don't, I think it'll be okay. But I realize that in thirteen A, the resolution for a school board member attendance at AMSD is pulled because that was a resolution to attend AMSD for myself this Friday and my state speech tournament details will not allow me to go to that meeting. So I, I don't need the resolution for attending that committee meeting down in the city. Yep, and then that next one, I can just, you know, we can just read it, we do have to approve this one. So I'm looking for, I, I make the motion that we accept Resolution, now I can't get down to it. There is Resolution SP dash four dash twenty-three dash thirty-nine fifty-seven. The resolution reads that, that the result that the independent school district seven oh nine, St. Louis County, Minnesota, pay costs incurred as per district policy for school board members to lobby at the state cap. So I make the motion, is there a second? Member Zadowski makes a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor of Resolution, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. That brings us to thirteen C, and that is the Head Start, Presentation and Approval of Head Start Items by Sherri Williams. Thank you for your patience. Lot of patience. She works for a young kid. And we have one handout, do we have any others, or is just this the only one?
You should have two.
Two, okay.
Two?
I, I have a number of things in front of me.
You look like this. And I'm happy to share two.
I've got this one.
Okay, Sherri.
And then I have. But you can start, thank you.
Sure. So I came to the committee of the hall meeting on April third with a variety of documents, looking for approval for them. One of them is our annual self-assessment. I'm not really re-presenting the self-assessment, correct? I'm just sharing that I did do a presentation at the committee of the hall on our annual self-assessment. No changes are within that document, so as that was presented, it is still that way. There were no changes in four of the items that I brought to the committee of the hall, including the self-assessment, our request for enrollment reduction, where we'll be converting two of our half-day classrooms to full-day classrooms, our cost of living adjustment and quality improvement grant, and our state grant application. Were all presented at the committee of the hall, and there are no changes within those documents. So they all, all of these documents require school board approval. However, there were changes in several of the documents, and we have not yet submitted our grant. We'll be uploading documents, our grant is due on May first. And since those changes happened before we submitted the grant, we wanted to make sure that you were aware of the changes before we actually upload the documents to the new grant. One of those changes has to do with a corrective action that we are experiencing a deficiency in the Duluth Head Start program regarding transportation. And we had asked that the, when a deficiency is given to the Head Start program, you have thirty days to respond to that deficiency. We had asked at that committee of the hall meeting for a two-week extension for that corrective action plan. And we realized for a variety of reasons outlined in this document, that we really need much more time than that. So there are steps that we need to take with corrective action. One is a review of policies and procedures. Another is the training of staff, parents, and, well, bus drivers, teaching staff, and parents on those new policies and procedures. We have to implement the policies and procedures and then monitor to see that the implementation is successful. And it is not possible for us to accomplish all of those things prior to the start of the new school year. So we are making a plea to the Office of Head Start. I now know that CFO is not the correct title for, so in our document, I should have put Executive Director of Finance, which I'm understanding as we look at this document. So I, I'm not sure if I should just submit this as it is or quickly send another one. I may do that because I do need Jill's signature on that and I'd like it to be accurate. But so what I'm looking at is this particular letter that we're sending to the Office of Head Start. It was important to point out that we had dialogue with our governing board. Office of Head Start wants us to communicate with each other. So it was Representative Sandholm who pointed out, this doesn't really make sense because you're still going to, you know, we still are not guaranteeing that it's an authorized bill. That did come up in conversation when we had training and technical assistance comes from the Office of Head Start to walk you through the Head Start performance standards and give you guidance. So that did come up also when we had our training and technical assistance. We'll have three meetings with them, and it did come up in the second meeting, what can we do for this? It was helpful also to meet with Terry Williams, who is from the Green Bay School District. Green Bay, very similar to our unique situation where the school district is the grantee. So it was fabulous talking with her because she understands our situation. Nobody else really understands our situation. So Terry Williams was really very helpful, as have Simone and Jeremy Casapetus have been fabulous people to work with through this. So I'm very confident that we will be able to indeed have a system where we are making sure that preschool children are kept safe on the bus. So, so I'm just asking the Office of Head Start to extend that, and I'm optimistic that they will. There's compelling reasons. So that is a change. I also have removed the transportation waiver. The transportation waiver is how I share with you what our procedures are. And, and I know that we'll be, I'm going to have that document ready for committee of the hall, which is coming up so quickly. So, but I would like to share that with you then. So very quickly, I'll be adding something to the agenda for committee of the hall next week already. Because that's our transportation waiver sharing with you, the plan that we've come up with for correcting. And so that is one item that has changed. We were asking for a longer extension. The second item that's changed is our federal grant application. So we were asking for a four-day week next year for a variety of compelling reasons. We currently have families every, or students every other Friday. So there are a couple of Fridays that we don't have preschool students. And that is to allow our teachers for prep time. Prep time can't be looked at as a daily thing, we look at it more as a monthly thing. And we received a phone call from the Office of Head Start last Friday afternoon saying, you know, we've been reviewing your file, and back in 2017, your Head Start received additional funding to provide a thousand twenty hours of, in two classrooms. So additional funding was given to us back in 2017, mid fiscal year 2018, before I was here, so I really can have the historic knowledge of that, that, that you will be required to provide that going forward because it was an addition to your grant. And so in looking at our calendar, there's no way that you can reach that with a four-day week. So a four-day week is off the table. We knew that that was an iffy thing. We were just stating the case for the Office of Head Start, and we're letting them decide and make their best decision and trusting them because that's the way the system works. But we now see that there's, that is not, that is not a request that is possible to, to ask for, given that. We do have a calendar. In order to reach that thousand twenty hours, we have to extend the school year for two teaching teams. So they'll be doing home visits with families prior to the start of the school year and after the end of the school year. And that's what allows us the space in a calendar to offer the thousand twenty hours. So since this is prior to the send button for our Head Start grant, I wanted to bring those changes to you so that you are aware of those before I hit the send button, which I'm willing to do tomorrow. And you're welcome to join us for axe throwing, which is our celebratory thing we do whenever we submit a grant.
Any questions? Thank you, and thank you for being patient. We tried to figure the best way to make the changes and bring it to the board and get the approval. And we just thought this was the best way to just remove it all and then have Sherri stay to the very end so she could just share with us all of the things, the things that don't need changing, that we've already approved. And then these, these few things that are, are very important, that do need my signature.
Yeah.
So she can get her grant. and then these, these few things that are very important, that do need my signature, so she can get her grant right now.
Okay.
Okay. We're good. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherri.
That brings us to, any questions? See, no questions, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. So, Member Eater, a second?
Second.
Member Sandholm?
Yeah, do we have to act on this for her before we adjourn?
Oh, do we have to, do we have to accept these changes and make a motion?
We already, we added it to the agenda.
Not, we took it off the consent agenda.
The agenda.
Well, this is a new item, so do we need to make a motion to approve the changes?
Everything needs approval, everything we've had to have approval.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the presentation and approval of the Head Start items that was shared by Sherri Williams. Member Eaters makes the motion to accept the presentation and approval of Head Start items. And Member Laffler Kemp, all those in favor of, of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Thanks, Member Sandholm, I would hate for have Director Williams to stay this whole time, then tomorrow to find out that I should have made that motion, so that's why we're a team, we take care of each other. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn, Member Eater gives up to me a second. By Member Sandholm, all those in favor of adjournment, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero.